Good evening and welcome to the May 7th Board of Trustees Meeting here in the Village of Monroe. If I could all ask you to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes. First, the organizational minutes of April 1st. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried, thank you. Our approval of the minutes for the April 2nd meeting. I need a motion? I need a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried, thank you. Our April 11th public hearing. One moment. Just want to check something. Okay, our April 11th public hearing. I need a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I need a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so carried. April 16th special meeting. Excuse me. Am I?
April 16th was the second of the regular board meetings.
Okay, alright, then the special meeting on the 29th. Right, okay. Okay, so the April 16th meeting, I need a motion to accept the minutes there.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye. I'm staying, I was not here.
Aye.
Thank you. Aye, so carried. Special meeting April 29th. I need a motion to accept the minutes of April 29th.
I'll make the motion.
I need a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye. I'm staying.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. And then the special meeting on April 30th.
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes on the special meeting on April 30th.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm wondering why it says conflict for me.
It should say beat conflict, I think.
Yeah, but I don't think there was a conflict for me.
I think it was me.
April 30th?
Yeah, correct.
That wasn't there. Which meeting?
April 30th meeting.
Yeah, wasn't that the, um, the far one up in the boardroom?
No, this was the emergency meeting to provide the budget changes.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, just checking.
Yep.
Sorry.
And you weren't here, no. Public hearing?
No. That wasn't the 29th?
Twenty two's.
Then I wasn't here for that one.
Okay. Alright, so we have a first and a second?
We do.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
We already had a first and a second.
Very good. Call a question?
Aye.
Aye. I'm staying.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay, next order of business, budget transfers and modifications. Have the trustees had an opportunity to read through them?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions? I need a motion to accept the transfers as written and the modifications. We have a first, a second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, sorry.
Aye.
Aye, so carried, thank you. Okay, next order of business, completion of probationary period.
Yep.
Trustee Hool.
Yep, in a memo from Chief Melchiori. He's notified us that the following officers have completed their required probationary term. Daniel Lindell, police officer effective April 18th, 2019. Richard Haley, dispatcher effective March 29th, 2019. And Alexandra Travato, part-time dispatcher effective April 23rd, 2019. The required MSD 426-B will be submitted to the Orange County Department of Human Resources. I put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business is the Brian Pennella, part-time parking enforcement officer, trustee Hool.
Mm-hmm, and another memo from Chief Melchiori. He writes asking that the Board of Trustees accept his recommendation to appoint Brian Pennella to the position of part-time parking enforcement officer effective May 8th, 2019, at an hourly salary, an hourly salary of $20 per hour. He's currently a part-time dispatcher with the town of Warwick and has undergone the required department background investigation, physical, and drug screen. I put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so carried, congratulations, Brian.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Pennella.
Next order of business, trustee Hool.
Yes, in another memo from Chief Melchiori. He writes asking that the Board appoint Jaleen Ramirez to the position of part-time dispatcher effective May 8th, 2019, at a salary of $18.73 per hour. Ms. Ramirez is currently an advisor with the Orange County Sheriff's Office, Sir, Office Explorer Post 5110, and has undergone the required department background investigation, physical, and drug screening. I put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so carried. Thank you and welcome aboard. Okay, next order of business, resignation, Emily Whitman from the Monroe Joint Park and Recreation Committee, Commission. Trustee Beranger.
Okay, so, the Board, we regret the resignation of Emily Whitman from the Monroe Joint Park and Recreation Commission effective immediately. We express our appreciation of Ms. Whitman's dedication to the Commission since her joining in 2016 and wish her and her family well in their move from Monroe. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
Uh, just.
Want me to?
That's fine. First and second, okay, call a question? First, who called?
No, Debbie put it in the form of a motion.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so carried.
Emily, Ms. Whitman will be very missed from Monroe.
Next order of business, an appointment, John Gilstrap on the zoning board of appeals. Resolve that Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Mayor Dwyer and appoint John Gilstrap of 332 North Main Street in Monroe, New York to the zoning board of appeals to fill a vacancy that will be created. Actually, let me, let me take that back, that's not correct. To the zoning board of appeals as an alternate. Yes, Mr. Gilstrap will fill two empty seats as it stands right now on the alternates, am I correct? Howard? No, no, I mean to say the alternates, you have two alternates, there's nobody sitting, you have two openings in the alternate's position, right?
Yeah, we have two openings.
Exactly. So John will fill one. Exactly, okay. So, I need to put that, I like to put that in a form of a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so carried.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Gilstrap.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it very much. Next appointment, a part-time code enforcement officer, Frank Pace. Resolve that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of Mayor Dwyer and appoint Frank Pace of 46 Mooseman Road, Yorktown, New York, to the part-time position of code enforcement officer effective immediately. Mr. Pace will work a minimum of 10 hours per week at an hourly wage of $20 per hour. Mr. Pace will focus specifically on property maintenance, fire inspections, and rental inspections. I put that in the form of a motion?
A second.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so carried, and just so clear, one part I didn't mention. The appointment is contingent upon the preapproval from Orange County Civil Service, which we should hopefully have tomorrow. Next order of business, event application, Quasqucentennial Fishing Derby, trustee Hool.
Yes. The Quasqucentennial Committee, sponsored by Action in Monroe, has submitted an event application to host a fishing derby in Crane Park on Saturday, May 18th, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The application has been reviewed and approved by the Building Department, the DPW, the Police Department. There were no additional costs associated for police protection as beeline officers will monitor the event for any potential traffic-related issues. I put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so carried, thank you. Next order, event application, 2019 Village of Monroe Farmers Market, trustee Hool.
The Board of Trustees is being asked to approve the events application submitted by me, Dory Hool, trustee for the Village of Monroe, for the annual Village of Monroe's Farmers Market. The market will begin on Sunday, June 2nd, 2019, and conclude on Sunday, November 17th, 2019. It will be open on Sundays from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and will be located in the commuter lot on Milpon Parkway. The application has been reviewed and approved by the Building Department, the DPW, the Police Department. There are no additional costs for additional police protection or DPW services. The Police Department will close off the commuter lot every Saturday evening and reopen the commuter lot every Sunday after the event ends. B and C line officers will monitor the event for any potential traffic issues. Marshall and Sterling Insurance, Monroe Fire District, and Monroe Volunteer Ambulance Corp. will be notified of the event when the approval letter is sent. I put that in the form of a motion.
Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so carried, thank you. Event application, Quasqucentennial Community Yard Sale. Trustee Hool.
The Quasqucentennial Committee, sponsored by the Village of Monroe, submitted an event application to host a community yard sale in the commuter parking lot on Milpon Parkway on Saturday, June 1st, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Setup for the event will begin at 8:00 a.m. The application has been reviewed and approved by the Building Department, the DPW, and the Police Department. The estimated cost of additional police services is $568 and includes one officer on eight hours of overtime at $71 per hour to assist with setup prior to the event. Pedestrian crossings on Milpon Parkway during the event and breakdown after the event. I put that in the form of a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried, thank you. Next event application, 2019 Village of Monroe Summer Concert Series. Mayor Dwyer has submitted an event application for the 2019 Summer Concert Series featuring five concerts to be held in the, at the north side of Lake Street between the Milpons on the following dates, June 29th, July 13th, July 27th, August 10th, and August 17th. Concerts begin at 7:00 p.m. and end at approximately 8:30 p.m. In the case of rain, will be held the following day, Sunday, beginning at 7:00 p.m. The application has been reviewed and approved by the Building Department, the DPW, and Police Department. The estimated cost of additional police service is $1,065 for all five events and includes one officer on three hours of overtime at $71 per hour per concert to close down Lake Street between 17 and Milpon Parkway, as well as to assist with traffic control points. Therefore, resolve that the Board of Trustees approve the event application submitted by Mayor Dwyer for the 2019 Summer Concert Series featuring the five concerts to be held on the north side of Lake Street. I put that in the form of a motion? Call a question?
Aye.
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 Aye, so carried, thank you. Request for waiver for planning board fees from the Monroe Free Library. A letter was received by the Board of Trustees from Patricia Shanley, the President of Board of Trustees for the Monroe Free Library. She submitted a letter requesting a waiver of the planning board fees in the amount of $925 that were associated with the construction of a deck off the rear part of their library. Deck is to be used for the outdoor programs and concerts, which will be an asset to the community. The Monroe Free Library is requesting a waiver because the library is a nonprofit organization, which is funded by the taxpayers. I need a motion that we accept this request and offer a waiver to the Monroe Free Library.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second? Call a question?
Aye.
Aye, so carried, thank you. Next order of business is the unpaid charges levied to the fiscal year 2020 tax roll for the Village of Monroe. Resolve, per the requirement of Orange County Real Property Tax Service, to prepare of the June village tax bills. The Board of Trustees authorize the village clerk to forward the following amounts to be levied to the fiscal year 2020 June village tax. Amounts to be raised by taxes, $7,169,844. Unpaid water charges, $209,475.05. And property maintenance charges, i.e. grass and lawn violations, $2,0663. The property maintenance charges listed above pertain to the following properties. 235-218, 235-120, 209-146, 205-4126, 235-466, 212-222, and 206-577. I need to put that in the form of a motion?
I'll put that, okay. You're making that motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Call a question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried, thank you. Okay. Couple of things, I'm just going to go out of order, G and H. H refers to an IMA, interminable agreement, that the village would like to enter into with the Town of Blooming Grove. All the trustees have been given a, a proposed interminable agreement to review, and I thought tonight would be a good time to start the conversation. I've asked council to take a look at it, and she'll be doing that. But I just wanted to get into it, and if there's any questions the trustees had of me right up front, I can possibly answer. I'd be happy to do that. The IMA basically is for the purposes of working cooperatively with the Town of Blooming Grove for certain services that they have expertise in, i.e. tree cutting. So the Town of Blooming Grove has the ability to come in with licensed arborists and tree cutters and a certified truck with a bucket. They can go up and take care of our trees that are in danger of collapsing, falling, you know, or a public hazard. And that's a tremendous asset for this village. So, the opportunity came about, I had a conversation with the supervisor, Rob Drolleman over there, and he's offered that very comprehensively and extended further services as we needed them. So that's very much appreciated by me and I'm sure by the trustees and this board. So, we're going to allow council to have an opportunity to go through it and to see if there's any concerns there for us. And I think by next meeting, I think we'll be able to enter into this agreement, council?
Yeah, I'd just like the Board to also take a look at it, especially the exhibits, which kind of lay out the scope of work. And I think, um, the check marks of this work that the mayor is proposing to be provided on occasion, so.
Right.
Just take a look at that and let me know what you think. And in the meantime, I have taken a quick look at the language. It seems alright, but it was, I just thought it's, I really want to take a more thorough look at the language.
Right. Definitely, and we've already benefited.
I think it's fantastic whenever you can share services with another municipality.
Absolutely. So, alright, so we'll take a look at that, enough said on that. Next piece is, I've asked the chief to come tonight, Chief Melchiori, to discuss a village safety assessment that the Board has recognized we need. And chief, would you mind coming up and speaking to the audience and to the public? About the initiative and what we hope to achieve?
Mayor, we want to address the facilities within the Village of Monroe. One is the village hall itself. We want to do a threat safety assessment at this location. Our water treatment plant, our inlets, pump house, gatehouse, we want to address those issues. And again, down at the village highway department.
Sure.
Involving chemicals or equipment and safety and security.
As you said, these are going to involve cameras and.
Arms, cameras.
Physical assessments, property.
We already started approaching some grant process.
Right.
For some equipment and see if there's any funding for, I don't think we're going to get funding for the village hall or the highway department, but I think we can get some for the, for the Montbasha.
I agree.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
And Sergeant Kraus will take the lead on that.
Good.
And we'll get as much assistance from the outside as possible.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
And to that end, with regard to the water, there definitely seems to be more opportunity there for grant opportunities. The Board wrote recently for two grants that we actually tagged on with the town, and hopefully they'll come through for us. Both are on assessment of vulnerability at the lake that I feel is really important, that we need to control and to restrict the environment or access to it. So, I think going forward, as the chief said, we're going to be able to do very well, I think, with the, with the lake side of things. Irregardless, the village safety assessment Sergeant Kraus and the chief are going to move forward with, and it'll make us a better place to work and, once he's done his assessment. So I appreciate that, thank you. I don't really have anything. Anybody else, trustees?
I was going to say, Clean Sweep, I think, uh, I think it looked, it looked great. A few of us worked together, well, we worked together to clean up over by, um, between Joe Fixit, the old Joe Fixits, and, um, like that little triangle area. And we got a lot cleaned up, and I saw a lot of people around cleaning. And I'm hoping that it's something that people will kind of take into consideration more than just on Earth Day. It just, it really looked like a park by the time we were.
Right.
Done cleaning up, and it was just nice to see people coming together and making our town and village look even prettier.
Yep.
Yeah, the great job you guys did, for you, very nice.
I wanted to thank the Monroe Police Department for their help with the Arbor Day celebration on April 28th. That was at Smith Glove Park. Officer Mahoney and Sergeant Guzman came down, and they helped us dig some holes and plant some trees. We planted three seedlings to celebrate the village's quasqucentennial, the 125th anniversary. Two of them have nice little buds on them. One looks like a Charlie Brown tree. The poor thing, I hope it survives. But we hope that it will grow into beautiful trees. And both officers from the Monroe Police Department were wonderful with the kids who were there, helping them plant stuff. Officer Mahoney almost got a face full of dirt from one little girl, but it was, it was a great day. And I also wanted to give kudos to Officer Dunn for his very extensive knowledge on truck inspections. I went to their field. They did some field training on Thursday of last week. And the amount of knowledge that this man has regarding truck inspections was impressive. What he was teaching these guys without having to refer back to a manual, just off the top of his head. Absolutely amazing, very impressed. Good job, chief.
Okay, public comment, please. Sir? Sure.
First, thank you for getting the dates together for the hydrant flushing in a couple of weeks.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that. The DPW building fire alarm, does that have a fire alarm system in it?
Uh, the garage? I believe it does. Whether or not it's active, I can't say honestly.
The Town of Chester just had a.
Yep.
Serious mishap up there. I was up there that night. And, you know, I know the highway superintendent up there, and it's. Luckily, you know, it happened at 8:00 o'clock at night.
Right, nobody was there.
Police Department's right next door.
Sure.
So they walked out the door and saw the smoke and they knew.
They were actually in the building, the fire department, from what I understand. It was a Monday, and they were doing their drills when that truck was burning.
Yeah, and we were out on drill also, so we wound up going to that. But, you know, and the timing, as far as the season.
Yep.
That would have been in the dead of winter. And you would have lost four or five of your primary plow trucks.
I forgot about, yeah.
So, if you don't have the fire alarm system hooked up down here, make that a.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, absolutely. I called Greg Townsend last week, and I asked him to pull a policy and let me know what, what he can share on it, because they have to come and do annual inspections, so I'm waiting for that feedback.
That's about the last thing you want.
Absolutely, and we reached out to the superintendent up there and offered our services in any way he needed. Devastating.
And the last thing, I don't know, you and I met yesterday regarding the towns looking to do this conservative cluster residential zoning.
Yep.
It's within 1,500 or 1,600 feet of village boundaries. I, I have some concerns over what they're proposing. I didn't, I was not able to attend the meeting last night. You know, traffic for one. We just, we've got to do something. Freeland Street, Spring Street, North Main Street. It's, it used to just be gridlocked, it seemed like on Friday nights. Now it's every single day. I, you know, I got a fire call, and I'm home, I'm better off just walking down to the firehouse, because I'll get there faster.
Sure.
But, you know, there's just some concerns with what they're looking to do and why they want to do it along the, the village boundaries. If, if that's the case, why not allow the properties to be annexed into the village?
So, um, so.
I know you said you were going to go up last night.
I did, so I went up last night, I didn't speak publicly. I let the public do their thing and whatnot, and then a lot of what you and I spoke about was addressed. One thing that they did offer to do, which was the correct thing to do, in my opinion, they kept the public hearing open, and they're going to continue to do so. They expect at least two more public meetings. So that's a good, good thing, I think. And then the second piece is that I asked them to do maybe a PowerPoint, something more comprehensive, you know, because one of the things I noticed last night amongst the public is there was a anxious or anxiety sense, you know, a sense of anxiety in the room. But I think as the councilman McGinn started to put the narrative out there, I think it's, it came down a bit, Jim Rogers spoke, he was the first speaker, and he just said, I need more information. Like you had said, we just kind of got this and what's happening, you know? So Mike went into about a 15-minute narrative, and I think it helped a lot in the explanations. And then Supervisor Cardone followed. And then, after that, I think somebody, Brian Nugent spoke. So they, they agreed to keep everything open, they're interested in hearing from everybody. And I think their next meeting, they've encouraged a lot of people to show up and get into public discussion. I just said, listen, I need more information, my residents want to know more about what you're thinking about along our peripheral. And they agreed, and I think they're going to do that, they're going to constantly keep the conversation moving.
Against the town. But they can't even get it right up here on Gilbert Street. You have buildings that are being constructed that were not approved, you know, that run the plans, they're just building and threatening litigation. And that's right here, that's, that's less than 1,600 feet.
Right.
It's staring us in the face. History seems to repeat itself. The town, many years ago, when Meadow Glen off of Bailey Farm Road was constructed, I was involved in a lot of that with water contracts and the like, and there was supposed to be workforce housing in there. And there was supposed to be moderate-income housing in there. Well, the almighty dollar talked, the town took the money, they took $1 million and let Kay Hibnanian, who built that project, do away with what they promised the people here in the community.
And they went back to market-rate housing.
Yeah, so, just, you know, just keep that money.
No, absolutely.
I mean, traffic, we got, you know, somewhere, somehow, the, the town and the two villages got to get together to figure out how we're going to move traffic around this, this, you know, this whole town. The two villages and the town. And with what's going on across from the trooper barracks, that's only going to add to it.
Right.
Something that, that needs to get addressed, because it gets more and more frustrating every day, sitting in traffic and you can't move around here.
You're correct, John, and, and just today, we had a meeting with our traffic consultants about that very thing. And so, there's a whole new narrative starting up, so. about that very thing, and so there's a whole new narrative starting up, so...
Is that, is, I don't even, is the southeast Orange Traffic Task Force still in play?
I haven't heard from them or anything since, it's been a while, Orange County...
Back, we were, we were aggressively pushing to do the lark-and-drive extension, which ran parallel with 17.
Right up to 208.
And get onto 208.
Right.
To eliminate most of that Blooming Grove traffic and stuff, that's gotta snake its way up North Main Street.
True, and through the village.
You know, they've constructed buildings over there on what's supposed to be the footprint for that road, so anything, if it does happen, it's gonna be eminent domain, it's gonna cause a taxpayer report.
Right.
But, somebody's gotta start addressing, you know, the, the traffic, it's gotta start there, 'cause if we can't move around...
Absolutely.
...the sense of building.
Agreed, you're absolutely right.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Please, come on up. We won't be able to hear you on the tape if you don't, just pitch it down, the tape won't pick up your voice without you speaking to it. Just tip it down.
Tip it down.
There you go. Or you can hold it in your hand if you like. Okay. Vertically, you mean?
Yeah, I met with, Sharon Shear.
Yep.
I'm an environmental advocate for the area.
Sure.
People know me, some people know me, some people don't, but I, I actually flew to Africa, and I did work with donkeys, trying to rescue them. So if I would fly 22 hours to Africa, I mean, my local life here matters, it really does. So I met with SCOPIS, and I was trying to, right now, I'm looking into getting a clear-cut tree bill put to legislation, which would mean that the endangered species that are in the area, and the environmental study for palm tree and KJ, there is, there's, the environmental studies are scary. You have a long-eared endangered bat, you have your Indiana bat, one is critically endangered. This is the long-eared, this is the long-eared bat. This is the palm tree environmental study, that there was supposed to be a real study with bat sonar done. That means ground sonar, to make sure that they weren't going to, when they did their clearcutting, so like I'm backing up John on this, when they did the clearcutting, there's nothing I can do to fix that, it's done. The end of the day, this is what we have, we have now, Forest Road got clearcutted, 'cause in the fall, apparently, there was complaints about bats. The end of the day, bats are good, so what I want to do is say, bats come to the village, 'cause that's where they're coming next. When you take their habitat away, they travel within 20 to 30 miles from the caves. The females go into the caves in the winter, in November, they come out in the spring. I spoke to a biologist, I've actually spoke to bat biologists, and so, at the end of the day, this is what they look like, this is an Indiana bat, they're so small and adorable that you would not even believe it. I think that if you could put an alert out that the bats are gonna be coming to town, and that there's something called a three-chambered bat box, that anybody can put instead of those things outside their homes that go bzz, 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 there's a natural way. Down at the O and R Park, I have four bat boxes, there's no bugs there. You would think...
Where is this, you have this?
The O and R Park?
Oh.
Down here where the swans are?
Sure.
You're not gonna believe this, there's no bugs there.
Really?
Do you know why there's no bugs there?
'Cause the bats eat them.
There's four bat boxes.
Mm-hmm.
The bats are there. So when we, you know, people just don't think anymore about the nature, and about how important it is, and the fact is, the bats are gonna come here. Now, the bad news is, I think you should put an alert out on the, if you have a flyer or...
Constant contact. We have constant contact.
I would definitely put an alert out that bats in the spring right now are gonna be coming flying out, they go tree to tree. Their normal roosting area was Dunderburg Road, then Forest Road, as a passover, just got cut completely down. So I can't put that back, and that's why I'm meeting with SCOPIS and my local legislators right now, because at the end of the day, I can't put the trees back. The environmental study was ignored, this is palm trees environmental study, if you look at what I said. What, they put, yes, there's bats present, but then it's missing the part where they're endangered, one's critically endangered. So, we also have rattlesnakes that are very rare, and we also have pitch pine trees that are very rare. In the environmental study, all you need to do is go on the Monroe site, go under documents, go to page 40 on the palm tree, and then page 12 on the other one. There's like a KJ environmental study, and there's also a palm tree environmental study. Just skip right ahead to the environmental area, 'cause it's very interesting. So at the end of the day, I'm only here to give you a warning that if you take the mosquitoes, that's what they eat, if you take the mosquitoes, at the end of the day, you, you think the measles outbreak is bad now, we are gonna have West Nile virus. Okay, so what I'm telling you today is a warning, I'm warning you, that if measles could come to this village, and not only be one of the highest percentages of measles in the state between this area and New York City, why is that? I don't know, but I'm telling you this much, at the end of the day, you take all the bats out, the natural predators against mosquitoes, one female mosquito will eat a thousand moski, one female bat will eat a thousand mosquitoes per day. You take them out, now you've got mosquitoes all over, they have standing water there, they have standing water in Forest Road, and they also have another little lake. So now you have two lakes up there that are gonna attract mosquitoes, mosquitoes are gonna be there. West Nile virus is, is, is just very serious, it's not something you want us to get next. But I just wanted to give you a heads-up, that bat boxes, three-chambered bat boxes, will welcome these bats to our area. Bring them here, you know, anywhere you put the bat boxes, the bats will use. Three-chambered, facing southeast, because in the morning, it heats it up, then at night, it stays warm inside.
Sharon, have you reached out to the officials at KJ?
I have not.
That might be a good idea, I mean, you're referring to...
I went to SCOPIS, I didn't know what to do.
I would try there.
I'm in hot water with the Monroe Town Board, as you may have all heard, so I figured I would not go there, so...
I would try, Carrie Stroll, the officials there.
I figured I'd come to you, and ask you to please invite the bats, I mean, I like them, I think they're...
They're already in KJ, they should probably stay there.
No, they're, they're gonna, their trees are gone, there's more trees, we'll just put the bat boxes there.
So they're here, they are here, right?
If they, that's the thing, if we could get them to put bat boxes there, rather than cut the trees down, this is what I was talking about, somebody's gotta be educational to go over there, and I am not always the best with negotiating, as you may have heard, so I really do the best that I can, so I'm not the person you want to send over there to do the negotiating, I'm just saying, you need some bat boxes, lots of them, okay, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Okay. Having said that, I need a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of personnel and pending litigation.
Second.
Call the question?
Aye.
Aye.
So Carrie, thank you all for coming, and good luck. I appreciate your service very much, thank you.